Brandon, how you doing?
Well.
Speaking of distinguished beards.
Brandon rocks the beard too.
He does rock the distinguished beard. Venerable soul over there.
Yes.
What's the second item? I mean.
No, it's all of your decision. It's okay, he knows.
Oh, okay.
He knows, he said it was okay.
Well, this is good, it's a good thing to talk about.
Yes.
All right.
Are you ready?
Good, positive item on the agenda, so, sure.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This first item that is on your agenda this afternoon is a tree ordinance update. You all have been asking about this since we implemented the changes to the tree ordinance several years ago. Well, not several, a couple of years ago. And this is really to talk about what we have accomplished with the tree ordinance, to talk about our tree fund, and to get some back, some feedback from you all as to how we would like to move forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I think Edward is going to take the lead, and then also Drew is gonna, is gonna be tag teaming this with you, is that right? Drew Smith, our arborist. Okay, Edward?
All right. All right. So I haven't been to one of these sessions in a couple of years, so what's protocol? You want me sitting here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Congratulations, thank you.
What did you say?
Congratulations. I haven't been. Been a nice break. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
So Shannon said, we're here to give you an update on the tree ordinance real quick. Get advanced for us, Megan, thank you very much. So, back in 2019, many of you were here, but I think a few of you had not joined council at that time. But we were approached by two counselors asking us in 2019 what we could do to preserve the dwindling and diminishing tree canopy. And so we were given a task to try to stop the, stop the destruction of the tree canopy and actually try to regrow it while at the same time not impacting development. So during 2019, what we did is we actually went out and verified what a lot of people had been telling us. What people have been telling us is that they thought the trees were disappearing. And fortunately, we actually had a couple of satellite studies being done at the time. One from the Green Infrastructure Center, another one coincidentally had been done by the U.S. Forest Service, South Carolina Forest Service. And they had both told us the same thing, that neither was true, the tree canopy was diminishing. And in the past 10 years from that point, from about 2008 to 2018, we did see a reduction in Greenville's tree canopy from about 41 down to 35%. And so we went ahead and we said, all right, well, what are we going to do to stop this? So, so we looked at some of our sister cities, Charlotte and Atlanta, and tried to figure out what they were doing to stop their tree canopy loss. And we sought feedback from a lot of our professional associations, a lot of engineers, civil engineers, landscape architects, and those in the preservation community. And we worked with our neighborhoods, and eventually we ended up crafting our current tree ordinance. We presented this tree ordinance to the council retreat in 2020. We continued to have stakeholder meetings, and eventually in 2021, we had crafted an ordinance that really, I think, met everybody's expectations and demands because it did pass Planning Commission on its first reading with no nay votes, and it passed City Council, also with no nay votes, in June of that year. Megan? So a quick overview of what that tree ordinance did. It really, it did, it tackled our problem a couple of different ways. One of which is that it established new tree planting requirements. So previous to that, I think you were allowed to plant one tree for every 3,000 square feet on new development. We strengthened that, we made it one tree for every 2,000 square feet. We sort of strengthened some of the buffers. We did a lot of things to, to require more at the offset for every new tree that gets planted. The other thing we did is we established a mitigation for any trees that were being cut down. And this was brand new for the city of Greenville at that time. And what we said essentially was that for every tree that you cut down, you have to replace it with an equal number of trees, equal to the number of inches that you removed, right? So if you removed 20 inches of trees, you had to replace 20 inches of trees. You had to plant 10 new trees of two-inch diameter, for instance. And if you couldn't do that because you were running out of space, or actually if you didn't want to, you could also do a FLO, fee in lieu of. And that fee in lieu of was at $50 per caliper inch. And there were some additional provisions for heritage trees. So that $50 per caliper inch has slowly been building money. There's a fund, there's a tree fund, and that's what we're going to talk about today. That tree fund had caveats, though. We didn't say, look, we're going to gather all this money from the tree funds, and now you can go pave roads with it. You can't do that. In the ordinance, there are four things that you are allowed to do with that. I'll talk about those in a second. But the most interesting thing I think that we did was we established, and this was new at the time, this mandatory review. We said, look, this ordinance is meant to solve a problem. Let's see if it really is solving that problem. We're going to revisit it in two years to see if it is. Megan? So when we updated the ordinance, we actually sort of wrapped it in with this new code revision, code changes that we just completed this past June. And this is what we did to the tree ordinance itself. We streamlined it, we just sort of tweaked a lot of the definitions in there and the processes, some of our protections and exemptions. And that's really just based on two years of feedback from, from the community of designers and developers and arborists who are out there working on this or with this tree ordinance every single day. Some of the really cool things we did, though, is we have now added fee reductions for affordable housing. It's a pretty one-to-one, simple one-to-one ratio. If you are providing 50% affordable housing, we will reduce your tree fees by 50%. So it's a one-to-one ratio. We've also allowed it, allowed this, this new caveat where if you are doing affordable housing, the city will assist in landscape material installation costs. And again, what we're thinking is if you're doing 10% affordable housing, we'll assist in 10% of the required landscaping that, that you need to do.
So Edward, is a fee reduction not a rebate, correct?
That's correct. So the fee is a reduction that staff can do at a staff level. The rebate for installation costs would have to be done probably through development agreement. And then we also noticed in the past few years that we were seeing a lot of violations of the tree ordinance. People were simply ignoring it, and we didn't have any enforcement really above and beyond what the city has anyway, where you could sort of go back. But a lot of folks were actually clear-cutting and destroying all evidence. And so since what you own in trees is based on what you removed, if they were removing the evidence of what they had removed, we had no way really honestly calculating that they owe the city. So we have added a violation component to the ordinance this time around.
So how do we, how do we prove that?
Well, we don't need to anymore. So if they have completely removed all the evidence, then what the new ordinance says is they will be fined the maximum penalty plus double that. So the maximum.
Unless they can prove a count before that.
Correct. So therefore now it's in their best interest to actually follow the process correctly.
So we have pictures of the land itself before they be built?
So that's, that's the problem that we had before. So what had happened once or twice is that someone completely eliminated all the trees. They clear-cut everything, and they removed all evidence of what had been there. So sometimes we can go out and Drew can look at the stump of a tree, and he can say, well, that was a 20-inch tree, you need to give me 20 inches of new trees. That works sometimes, but sometimes they would simply remove the stump. They'd grind it, they'd bulldoze everything, and we had no way of knowing what used to be there other than we could sort of estimate based on satellite images. So in the new ordinance, what we've done is we have said, look, there is a $25,000 per acre cap anyway that's baked in. So we will charge you that amount. Now what we will do as a violation, because you broke the law, is that we are going to double it. And so that was in, that is in the new ordinance.
I think, I think the question is, is how do we know that somebody clear-cut?
How do we know? Usually people call and tell us.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, like a lot of.
Not usually, always.
Always, yeah. I mean, it's, it's tough to enforce a law that hasn't been broken yet. So we, we do rely upon, on people to tell us, but the great things about the citizens of Greenville, they, they're not afraid to tell us.
Satellite imagery.
And we got, and we got Google.
Can I ask you something? What, if someone wants to have a tree removed, and they call up a Schneider Tree Care, is it on Schneider Tree Care? And I just use that as an example. Is it on them to adhere to the ordinance and check, you know, when did you close on your property?
Right.
Right, were you post-June 30th, 2021, or free? And if you're post, then the tree ordinance applies to you, if you're free, it does not.
That's right.
Okay.
So.
So it's not on the property owner to prove that to when they can contact the tree person.
It's fine, as legal has told me quite often, it is, it is their responsibility to know the law.
Okay.
Right? And I will say that some of our more reputable arborists do know the law. And when they don't, they often will tell the property owner to give us a call. When we first released this ordinance in 2021, we did a fairly extensive educational output to all the reputable companies that are licensed in the city of Greenville. You know, two years later, are there some from outside the city that are starting to do work in here? Probably. And so, yeah, it would behoove us to, to do more education. But I will say, folks are pretty good. I actually fielded two phone calls today from folks just asking, say, can I cut down my tree? My arborist says I should contact you. So our professional community is doing a pretty good job.
Okay. And that's the point of giving this update today, is we're going to be running web stories and social media following this to try to remind folks about that we have a tree ordinance. All you have to do is call the city staff, and we will be happy to walk you through whatever your questions are related to trees.
Do we have adequate code enforcement staff to enforce this?
We do, but we've.
You just added a new person, right?
We just added a new person, and we may need to look at it moving forward, some additional folks in the, in the future. But we just added, Wanda came on board with us only about six or eight months ago. So we need to give it some time to, to do an assessment of that before we go back and start seeing what our other staffing needs might be in the future.
Okay. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, let's talk about that fund now, right? So remember I told you that the ordinance only allows us to expend that fund in a certain way? So this is what we established in 2021, all right? So here's what you can do with all those FLO monies. We can purchase trees and we can install trees on city property. Okay? We can maintain the existing tree canopy, again, on public property. Somebody asked a great question, they said, well, what if we run out of room to plant trees? So we added this in, we said, well, we can purchase real property with that tree fund, basically additional open space and green space. And then we've got this nice caveat, which is administration of all of the above. That's what we used to have, all right? So, so we made some changes, next slide, please. So in the new update, we still kept all, all four of those things, but we added a fifth component. And this fifth component, and this is really in keeping with the Greenville 2040, you know, idea of affordable housing, trying to promote affordable housing, that we're now allowing a percentage of new tree and landscape material and installation costs for affordable housing. That's exactly as I mentioned earlier, right? So if somebody is, is doing 20% affordable housing, we will allow the tree fund to pay for 20% of the landscape and installation costs. Again, that would have to be done through, you know, public-private partnership or development agreement, but at least council has, you know, they, they are armed with the ordinance to do that if they so choose.
Well, this is a really important point, and I don't want us to skip over it because this came from a conversation that we had for the last year with our affordable housing partners about costs of development within the city. And how could the city look at our toolbox and add to our toolbox towards affordable housing? And this is significant, especially when you're going to see our tree fund numbers, about what is, what is our commitment toward, out of the tree fund towards putting this money towards affordable housing projects? And being able to do that gap funding on affordable housing projects is, is huge, whether we're doing it, whether we're working on a, on one or two lots, you know, with Habitat, or whether we're working on a larger development with the Greenville Housing Fund. And so, you know, I think that, I'm not sure, I know that the affordable housing community, you know, I think is very appreciative of this through the, through the code update, but I'm not sure how much through all the code update that this was really a focus. And, and all I want to make sure we emphasize is this, this is a great way to take two things out of the three components of Greenville 2040 that our community told us were, were important. Open and green spaces and affordable housing, and find a way to tie those together. And so, you know, I think this is a significant addition to the code that we want to make sure that people know about, that there is now an avenue to help, another, another part of the toolbox to help offset those costs.
And that's, I'm sorry, and that's, that's, so if it's 50% of the units are in the affordable category, okay? Below 80% or below, regardless of the AMI range, 50% fall into that, then we would, could use the tree fund to fund 50%. I'm just saying as an example. Okay, so, but, but before, at the beginning of the meeting, you were talking about kind of sliding proportionately. So I guess I'm confused on the difference.
Yeah, so, so there's, there's, there's the difference. There, there are the fees that we assess a developer, and if you are doing 10% affordable, we'll give you a 10% reduction.
Okay.
That's a one-to-one, that's written in. But now that we've assessed those fees, they go into a pool, and how you spend that pool, that's at council's discretion.
Okay.
You could say, oh, you're doing 10% affordable? I'll give you 100% off, off your landscape installation costs. The ordinance doesn't tell you what the percentage is. The ordinance simply says you have the right to do it.
And it's done through a development agreement that we can report council for your review.
For each one.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
So for, for developers, it can work two ways. There's reduction in, if they cut down trees, reduction in that, but also it's if Habitat wants to add more trees to that barren lot.
That's exactly right.
The city can help.
That's exactly right.
Is there a minimum? Is there a minimum amount of affordable housing that's necessary? So first I heard 20, then I heard 10.
Is that our discretion?
So it's all going to be an agreement by agreement, basically?
That's right.
Correct. Yeah.
But we would, we would tend to stick to what the ordinance defines for the affordable and other, and other benchmarks that we have, which right now is either 10%, 60% AMI, or 50%. and other, and other benchmarks that we have, which right now is either 10%, 60% AMI or 15% to 80% AMI. So we would not, we would expect them to at least meet that because that's our basic, that's our, that's our benchmark already established in the ordinance.
Okay, cool.
And the reason we, we opted for this method of assisting the affordable housing community is so that if you were building a brownfield, for instance, where there are no trees, you can still tap in to the tree fund.
Through a private development.
Correct.
Just an informal chit chat with some developers who've been in the affordable housing area. Would this be helpful? Oh yeah, very helpful. So again, it's another revenue stream to be helpful on these affordable housing projects.
Yeah, and.
Good touch for us to have.
It, it is interesting in that one of the, one of the challenges that council gave us two, three years ago was they said, you know, make this thing work, but don't impact our development community. And in the past two, three years, honestly, the only pushback we've had from the development community is that they haven't been able to, to, to help with the affordable housing. So every other developer, we haven't heard boo from regarding the tree canopy.
Well, I think it, I think it makes the development better. I think it's a win-win.
I think so too.
If I was a private guy, I'd probably be doing it anyway.
I don't mean to jump the gun and you might have this on a subsequent slide, but did y'all look at, you know, we had a meeting with the constituent and, and the possible unintended consequence of a private property, knowing they fall under the tree fund, they're building a house and they only have to pay, say, or they max out because of the, you know, let's say they have three trees, got to go. And so they owe $25,000 the max. And the owner says, well, if I'm paying the max anyway, level them all. Take them all out because I don't want to get nickel and dimed in five years. Did we, did we have any things to consider on that?
So there is one thing that we did do and what we did do was we excluded the heritage tree fees from the maximum cap. So there is from 2019, there was a $25,000 maximum cap per acre. That was the cap. What we have done now is we have subtracted out the, the heritage trees from that maximum. So if you hit 25,000 just in taking out, you know, scraggly six inch, 10 inch trees, it's great. But that $45 additional fee does not, will not apply to the 25,000.
There's no cap on that.
Above and beyond.
For heritage.
That's correct. The other thing you could do, but.
Well, wait a minute. Let me, let me play devil's advocate.
Sure.
What if I said, I've got a heritage tree plus two six inches and I get to the 25 and then I have another six to 10 inches, you know, why not just take all those out too?
Well, they may see it that way, but we wouldn't.
Okay.
So we're running the.
We're the ones that runs.
We're the ones that run the calculations.
That, that's probably.
Heritage tree is still a heritage tree. So that, that $45 per inch of those heritage trees would stay.
Exactly right.
And, and I almost said this before, is it 45 or is it 50 plus 45?
50 plus 45.
So it's 95 on heritage trees.
So what are we doing if somebody clear cuts an acre of heritage trees? What are we doing with that?
We haven't had that happen yet. We haven't had that happen yet.
Well. But here's what you.
But it will. Can we have something available? Cause somebody is just as sneaky as everybody on this group.
Well, that's one of the things that we want to talk to y'all today about is at the end of this is what more do you, like, what are our next steps? What else would you like to see us bring back to you for consideration? One is we're really excited about the affordable housing. Does, are y'all, are you, are y'all happy with that? Have we gone far enough? What more do you want to see? This is a good question. So we want to, we want to get that feedback today. Like what are our next steps?
Yeah. My neighborhood has lots of heritage trees. I'm just saying, I got a lot of historical neighborhoods. So y'all better do something because I got some sneaky people.
Well, and heritage trees tend to be the ones that we struggle the most in keeping. And, and so that requires some additional conversation about what do we want to do about heritage trees? Because those are the ones that.
They were cut.
And when they come down, we tend to hear about them immediately.
And they do take up more room though. So typically, it's not like a pine forest.
That, that, that's true. That's true. It could be as easy as simply tweaking the fees. That might be as simple as it is.
So when we have replanting activity, do we, I mean, there are places that have no shade. They were typically blighted places. They never had any trees to begin with and they still don't have trees. And then there are places that had trees, for example, heritage trees that are coming down. They're 80 plus years old. So do we, how do we prioritize where we're doing the replanting?
I mean, that's a great question.
Think that's, you're going to.
That's next phase. Next phase. Okay. So quick update on the actual fund itself. When we started this fund, when we, when we dropped the gavel in June, we had $4,290 in that tree fund. Two years later, we have about 1.1 million. This is from those street fees. So you can see a little bit of it comes from donations. The vast majority of it, 607,559,000 dollars have come from those fee in lieu of permits that we have been issuing. We have a couple of line items in the expenditures department, which I'll get to on the next page. But right now, as of today, we're sitting at about 1.12 million dollars.
Edward, what percentage of, I think I know the answer, what percentage of people are choosing to do the fee in lieu? As opposed to replanting?
I think most.
Because to me that defeats, a little, little bit defeats the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance in my mind was to have people replace trees on their current lot instead of opting out.
Or, or look hard at their design to see if they could avoid taking out a tree. But, but the reality is, is people get in their head what their design's going to be and they're not slowing down on saving a tree.
The reality is it is still cheaper to cut down a tree than to leave it in place.
So do we need to tweak the fees to change that?
That would be one avenue.
That, that is an option if you'd like us to explore it.
Next page, please.
Can I ask you a question about the replanting?
Yes, sir.
This is very specific. But particularly in North Main, you see a lot of these trees that come down in the right of way, right? And I'm sure it's happening throughout the whole city. Do we, can we re, do we replant trees in those where we take them down?
Yes, we do.
And we're going to talk about that some in just a minute.
Though I think our biggest problem here with that, when we think of is you run into the utility issue.
No, no, no. I'm not talking about underneath the power lines.
Yeah. But I mean, when we try to replant, it sounds good, but sometimes we can't replant with the kind of trees.
We don't want something that's growing into the power line.
No, I get that. But like, for instance, if you look at, you know, the streets in North Main, you've got the power lines that run down one side. But even so, going the other side of the road, when trees get taken down, I'm just wondering, do we have a, a robust plan to say, do we have to get permission from the owner to do that?
If it's in the right of way, no.
Okay.
No.
And that's one of the things we want to talk about because we do have some areas of town where the rights of way, the trees in the rights of way are routinely coming down, especially during storms because of just the age of the trees. And that's an area that we would like to talk to you all about or some of the, one of the things I think that Drew would like to see us do is more, you know, are we ready to start taking down some of these trees that are not helping the canopy? And start replanting that canopy? We would like to use some of the tree fund to do that.
Yeah, right.
And, and we have up late, and it's, I'm sure it's happening in North Main too, but we have property damage occurring as a result of heritage trees in right of ways.
That are aged.
That were dead anyway and they come down and then we are liable.
We're not going to see it in our lifetime when we replant these trees, but you know, the next generation will have a 40 footer.
So Drew's got a slide coming up here where it shows where we are recommending allocating a good percentage of, of the fund towards new plantings throughout town. So real quick, before I wrap up here, this is, that, those very small line items that you saw for expenditures of the last three years, this is what we've been expending them on. Some newly planted trees, a lot of the tree giveaways, which have been incredibly popular with the community. And so we spent about $35,000 over the past two years. Megan, next slide, please. And this last year, this is where all those trees have gone. Let's now hand it over to Drew and he'll talk about.
Let's go back. That's pretty significant. I'd like, you know, I mean, between tree plantings and giveaways, you know, since October of 2022, that's 2,500 trees. You know, so staff has been working hard at our tree canopy and, and I just don't want that to get lost in the conversation about the efforts that our teams are putting into trying on this tree canopy.
And, and of those Shannon or Edward or Drew, with the exception of residential, the 350 residential, all of those others, well, no, I'm sorry, the giveaways and residential.
Residential is our right of way in residential communities.
With the exception of the giveaways, all of those, so 2,100 give or take have been planted by our staff. Because it'd have to be, if it's in a park or it's a river bench or it's downtown, we were doing that. Our city was doing that.
Correct, correct.
So even the residential, that's, that's right, right of way of planting.
Residential, but giveaways is somebody, somebody got it.
We're giving, we're giving that to somebody.
We have a, we have a number on the number of trees that have been planted because of the ordinance in parking lots and commercial development. That was really a lot of our focus last time was the private tree requirements.
Right. So we definitely increased the number of trees that have to be planted in all new developments.
Yes.
Definitely did.
Yep, we absolutely did. We went from one tree per 2,000, one, I'm sorry, one per 3,000 down to one per 2,000 square feet, which is 50%.
And I would say you can see the results. You see, you see parking lots that really do have real trees instead of little faux trees like we were discovering.
Yeah.
We probably have that number somewhere. Well, I get one.
We could, we could.
Be a nice one to keep because it's not just what we planted, it's what the ordinance requires the private sector to plant.
That might be a good research for Zach to, to go back over the last year and pull all of our site plans and look at what would have been under the previous ordinance versus what we've done under the old ordinance. And we can, I mean, under the new ordinance and we can add that to our next update.
Let me ask you this on the giveaways. So when we give away a tree, that's probably going to someone's private lot. That's our only way of getting more canopy on private property. Are we, I'm always hearing about running out of trees and we've probably run out of patience for standing there giving away trees. Is there a way or is it prudent to amp up on that? Because there's no way we can, you know, we can't go, nor do we want to be going in and planting trees on people's private property. But I think 85% of our canopy is on private property, right? Some, some crazy number.
So that might be a supply issue, but I think we also have some ideas.
And sometimes we give away all the trees and sometimes we come back home.
Really?
Yeah. So it's not, it's hit or miss. It depends on the day.
We also want to talk about a potential private partnership that may address some of those concerns.
Edward, of those 2,500 trees, what's the total caliber inches?
Oh, I think the major, vast majority of them were probably three for ordinance, but some of the ones that were on the river bench, river bench may have been whips.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the ones in Cleveland Park right at the bridge.
Or some of those are for slope stabilization and, and wetland preservation. So they would have been whips when we planted.
Whips are.
Sticks.
Little sticks.
Do we have a target canopy number percentage?
I think we're shooting for 40%. Yeah. 40 by 40.
Or 28.
We're at 35.
35. Last time we did our council.
That's great.
Those are the things that.
So last.
Hey Drew, you're, you're up.
Last time we did our, our count was with the Green Infrastructure Center and that was a part of a grant. And it started this promotional of Ritterding Greenville. And that was to work to preserve our existing canopy, plant and do giveaways and promote planting trees on private property as well with those giveaways. So this, these are some of the park projects that we have in plans. Gower and Timmins, we have a lot of Virginia pine that are, they fall over a lot, to be quite honest. And we're, we're wanting to exchange that canopy for a better tree. So we'll end up removing about 60, 70 trees and going back with about 150 trees in those areas. Watts Park is just an open space right now that's tucked in behind some houses. And we'll plant that out and hopefully that will keep us from having to mow that area as much as the city staff because we can't get into that park as well. We have some trees in Falls Park and there's also some additional plantings around the Nickel Town Community Center when that, that plan is more developed.
And what's the typical size of those trees we're putting in?
Three inch caliber.
The, um, go back to that. It's like this, in Falls Park and Drew, I'm not sure if you were on board at this point, but when the county put in that access down to the trail behind the governor's school, they took out those magnolias. And that's all up and running. Where are we on getting that addressed?
So that has been planted back. Those, those magnolias have been planted back. There's some that we were able to save out of that that we weren't expecting to be able to save. By eliminating a small stairwell, we were able to save a few more trees, but that's all been planted back.
Did we plant back magnolias again?
There were some magnolias at the top of the road because of DOT and the narrowness of the, of the right of way. We had to get back with some red cedar as a screening. Main Street, part of this fund is to be able to prune all of our Main Street trees off of buildings and keep dead wood out and doing insect treatments on those trees. There's a lot of work that go into those older oak trees. They're on growth regulators. We're trying to keep those things alive as, as long as we possibly can.
So there are 1,100 trees on Main Street?
It's central business district itself.
Can I ask a question? Not a smart question. How did the, how did the trees get water? Thank you. It's very smart.
Are you asking where the roots are?
You know what I mean?
I really don't know. So.
Like if, if they're all covered with cement.
I pulled, I pulled all those sidewalks up. We put in silver cells for, for those block parking trees, those newer ones. There's some that go in there. We harvest a, a big thing of roots every time we plant annuals. I think that a lot of the feeder roots are in those end caps.
Isn't there some drip, some drip irrigation in some of them?
There is some that, most of it doesn't work at this point.
Oh, are y'all talking about Main Street trees? Oh, no, no. We, we hired a consultant about 15 years ago. We were very concerned about the health of Main Street trees due to a few trees that weren't so healthy. So we hired a consultant and we expected the, we feared the result was going to be like Furman University or someone's going to, they're going to come back and say, you know, it's all vulnerable. It's all needs to be uprooted and brand new trees. We're looking at taking down all the trees on Main Street. That was the concern. Court came back, surprise, surprise, we're stunned. 90% of your trees are in great shape. The roots, instead of going like this, for whatever reason, most of them go straight down to the water table.
That ain't.
They are naturally. And he said, and I remember this guy said that he's been doing this all the country, looking at trees. He said, he never seen quite anything like that. It has entered the soil, the way the soil interacts and it's an old area of town. So that's why they started taking out a lot of trees. We took out a few trees here and there near the Hyatt, I remember. And new trees were planted and they're doing great now. People did squawk when those came down, but it looks great now. But that's the, it's amazing. And I think the same group comes back and looks at our trees every couple of years.
Jim Urban has stopped going, he had blood cancer.
It's a great story of how, so tend to surprise in good light.
We need to have them to write it and send it to the arborists.
Other parts of this money would be used for doing inventory in the special emphasis neighborhoods. We had started this on four different special emphasis neighborhoods and we want to finish that to be able to get us where we can plant in our right of way and also what we have in those, those areas that are city owned trees. Also do another tree canopy study. We're coming up on that five year from, from when we did the, the last one. So do another tree canopy study to see where we are, see what our ordinance has done in the, in the past five years.
Have we, have we already done Greater Sullivan?
We have.
We have. We've, we've done West Greenville, Greater Sullivan, Green Line Spartanburg and Nickel Town.
Do, do we have any kind of plans for invasive?
Well, I'm sorry.
Species like Bradford pears and.
So that, that is one thing I'm working with Flumston on. They have a Bradford pear bounty and we could get on board with that as well this year. I don't have that in the.
I want that job.
For Bradford.
Bradford pear mercenary.
Basically you tell us you had a Bradford pear in your yard and you cut it down. We'll give you a free tree to replace.
Um, we're just like, Pleasant Valley has already been done? I'm asking?
It has not been.
Okay, so.
It, it should have been in that list.
Okay, so we got to add Pleasant Valley.
But we're, well, that's one of the things that we wanted to, you know, these are our ideas of how we want to spend the tree fund and we would like to, some concurrence from council that this is, and to us, this is definitely an area. We want to study all of our special emphasis neighborhoods. We want to study all of our special emphasis neighborhoods and look at the tree canopy in every one and then identify areas where we could spend money to plant in rights of way there.
We'll just make sure Pleasant Valley doesn't fall through the cracks.
We won't, we won't.
We've already done a few, but I think.
We'll go through.
It is unreal how sunny it is in those areas.
Yes.
Yeah. So another partner to, to try to get with planting trees on private property is, is partnering with Trees Upstate and giving them a little bit of this tree fund money. They were allocated ten thousand to give to them to be able to plant mostly in those special emphasis neighborhoods.
So, so going back to your earlier question, Councilor Dow, we don't have the ability to plant on private property that Trees Upstate does. And we've talked about a partnership with them in the past and what we would like is your permission. And we'll be bringing this forward in a resolution with all of these things, but your permission to enter into a partnership where we give them some money from the tree fund to help plant, that we would want an emphasis to work with our special emphasis neighborhoods on that.
So like I think about Arcadia Hills where so much has got to be Greenville Housing Authority, right? So, so that would fall into that category, right?
Yes.
Without a Trees Upstate doing it, we can't do it. So that's the perfect vehicle to do it.
Councilor Fleming?
I just hope, you know, we had a concern the last time because they came in and there wasn't conversation with the people. And it was like, why are they digging up? So hopefully we will have a.
We would work through our community development department to help us coordinate proper communication plan.
They had the information, but it wasn't communicated. They just went out there and said, well, we got the stuff. So we're just going over here and just take care of business. And the neighbors came out like, who are you and why are you digging up? Moving and adding trees.
That would be part of any agreement is we would want communications to come through Leslie Fletcher and also community development to assist.
You'd get real tatty when they say you're messing with a tree.
Yes.
It sounds like we need door hangers. When we do that, we can door to door to just hang a door.
Yeah, we're coming, sweetie.
Katri.
Tree fairy.
The tree bear is on the way.
The next, next thing is what we talked about earlier is purchasing actual land, open space for planting trees and having an area to be able to, to plant trees. We have staff that are looking at different opportunities for us to, to purchase.
And we, as, as y'all know, there, we're in a, we're working on a piece of property right now that would allow, and we would be buying it solely for tree planting and, and buffer. But tree planting and, and a piece of plate area where we can just go plant trees to improve our canopy.
That sweet little boy.
Of course.
Where's my mommy? Get that scary man away from me.
Of course, tree giveaways, that will continue. Other, other things, the wetlands in Unity Park is, has Emerald Ash for the majority part of that, that forest is ash. And so we'll be treating those trees to be able to save. There's fifty ash trees in that little pocket. So we'll be treating those trees to save those. Our Craig Merrill Bart'sville is one that popped up this, this year. And so we feel like we're going to be treating that and trying to get rid of that for a, a long while.
I'd like to say that, that the, checking those trees, right, saying would be a good opportunity to work with not only AJ Winberg, but the elementary schools in the area. Because they would, these two, where would they go to ever find an Emerald Ash tree? See what I'm saying? And if we have something, we need to coordinate that with them and let, let those children come and see something. Because I mean, I, I mean, I look at them every day. So, but it's like, I didn't know it was an Emerald Ash until somebody told me and then I start paying attention. So, you know, that's really a great thing. Please coordinate that.
And then the bottom line estimates of all these, these things put together is, is the cost for most of those projects to be done.
Which adds, okay.
It's about fifty percent.
So what, what happens to the other five hundred thousand?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
That's from our executive session next, last week.
Go ahead, Drew. Do you have anything else? Think we should have one more slide?
Ask questions?
Do you want to talk about the award? Did that tree just win?
Not yet. Nope, that's.
No, sorry.
Can't talk about it in November.
Let's talk about the tree fund questions.
Well, let me ask you a quick question. When we are planning in right of ways, how are we considering height versus power lines?
So we have, they're essentially two types of trees. They're canopy trees and they're understory trees. And so canopy trees, you know, obviously can go up to a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet tall. And what we say for requirements on all street trees is that you have to plant one tree every forty feet, unless there's a power line, in which case the requirement drops down to one for twenty feet. So we're basically doubling the number of trees, but they're smaller, shorter trees.
Are they going to get as high as the power lines in the new? I mean, they are jacking them up in a lot of places and seeing that.
So understory trees are anywhere from what, twenty-five, yeah, maybe thirty feet or.
Yes, they do get up in there, but they're not, it's a smaller cut to keep them beat out underneath.
I'm trying not to pass the same problem on to the next generation. And I'd love to think of us undergrounding those lines for the next generation, but I just, that's not going to happen. So I just don't want to keep recreating power outages.
When Duke comes through.
Everywhere throughout Greenville, everywhere.
The corridors anyway.
When Duke comes through and chops those trees, the effect of chopping the understory trees will not be as deleterious to their health as it would to canopy trees.
Okay.
So I think our questions today to you all are, A, do you, do you like the plan of what we've presented on how to spend the tree fund? Are there areas that we missed? How do you, and, and what are your suggestions for changes to the ordinance? Any other changes or do you feel like this is, it's accomplishing what we were trying to accomplish?
I, I, I would love to find a way to encourage people to plant instead of pay. And I don't know how, I don't know how you do that without raising the penalties for taking down a tree. But it seems to me like it defeats the purpose of the ordinance.
Well, not necessarily because the reason they're cutting is because the tree is in the way of their development. And if there's a way, if there's a way you can look at the development so it can move a little bit around a tree, then, then that would be great. But that's the only reason why I would see they would be cutting it anyways because it's in the way of their development.
I think usually like replace them.
Yeah, I'm talking about like putting it in a different part of the lot.
I think, I think you guys got to look at, see if there's a balance between raising the fee and making it. I mean, that's the only way I see it.
Or raise it the maximum.
How do we do that without raising the fee? But I think that's really the only way. You have, you have to figure out, you have to, you have, you have to figure out where that pain point is to where a developer says, okay, it's actually more economical for me to replant a tree as opposed to just paying the fee. And at this point, apparently it's much more economical for them just to pay the fee.
And we make it very clear to them that they don't necessarily have to replace the tree in the same spot where we cut it down.
Correct. So the, so the trick to that counselor.
That sometimes it's the understanding of what, what's there.
So the trick to that counselor is that what we have, what we have noticed over the past few years is that that pain point seems to be right on target for small family developments. But it is not on target for some of the larger developers.
Well, can we bifurcate the fee?
That may be an option.
To create one class of fees for single-family development and then another class of fees for larger major developers.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I got another thing then. Can you bifurcate? Who just used that word?
I did.
I am so impressed.
Very good bar.
I learned it had punitive damage.
So in, in, if you think about areas where there are large lots, particularly where development may, may not have really taken off, but we're going to start seeing people buy up homes, mow down the house, build anew, and they're gonna build a bigger house. A big old house. So to me, tying it, tying that max somewhat to the square footage of your house makes sense. If I'm building, and I'll, I'm sorry.
Tell them the max.
An example being a, a giant, I mean, this thing is like eleven thousand square foot house. Took out all the heritage trees, paid the fee, paid the max, paid the adder. Because they had it basically. And the house was, was, you know, the house was the house that they wanted. They're always going to build that.
Ferris?
I'm not saying where it is.
That's right.
But my point being, there's no, it, it, it depends, everybody's going to build a bigger house. And so the max, the cap, twenty-five thousand dollars isn't much if you're building a million dollar home.
That's right. That's right.
And if you're building a million dollar home, it's going to have a certain amount of square footage in a certain area. And I just think that max is not.
It needs at least one tree max up.
Yeah. I mean, it's just not enough to, to disincentivize. I'm just thinking that could be another level of bifurcation.
I think it's an excellent idea. And we have seen some successes in some of these smaller, single-family infills where, you know, they'll give us one design. We'll say, look, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars because you're taking away this tree. They do come back to us with a different design and that's exactly what.
That's what we wanted.
To do. But again, you're correct that these higher levels of development is pocket change.
So, so we see that that's an area of success and just for the essence of time. How do you feel about our approach towards the spending of the tree fund? You know, one, are you in agreement with the affordable housing? And should we be committing a certain amount annually to the tree fund?
Yes.
Of the tree fund to affordable housing towards supporting that? And what would that be? Is there a dollar amount, a percentage amount? Or do we just take them as each one comes in and we have that discretion? We leave it at our discretion?
Door number B.
Okay.
Because what I don't want to do is start earmarking a bunch of money for not shovel-ready projects. That's kind of where I.
So that's, that was my first question. And then the other question is, now that we have a little bit of money built up, are you supportive of us continuing to try to buy land for plantings?
Oh, God, yes.
Because that, that we haven't had the money in the past and now we do to go and try to really focus on land purchases specifically for plantings.
And y'all had a metric developed for, you know, what makes something a good buy?
Yes, we do.
We do. We have an open space matrix that we run everything through before we will come to you all with a, with a purchase.
Many homeowners associations that, that work with us, et cetera. Can we have a, a special price for them? You know, there are homeowners associations. They are not special emphasis, but there are a lot of homeowners associations and they, they really are very nice. They do a lot of things. You got a few of them or whatever. But anyway, can we have like a certain category because they will, you know, a certain price for them so they can buy more trees in order to, to landscape and put in their community as well?
Why don't we do it like this?
I think that will help.
If they will have us, we can go and do tree giveaways in their neighborhoods in conjunction with their neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Neighborhood meetings and or their neighborhood socials. And we are open to any neighborhood.
You got a lot of them up there. You better.
This is for our media partners removed. We would love for any neighborhood that has rights of way that are missing trees or needs canopy or shade to please contact Drew Smith because we are always looking for areas to plant.
Okay.
And we will go to any neighborhood and review if they will contact us. Just give us time to get there. But yes, Councilor.
Should, should we consider bigger caterpillar trees? In the giveaways? No? Okay.
Oh, in the giveaways?
Or, or purchase, or, or say, sell at a discounted price.
We have.
So the nice.
Because these caterpillar trees aren't going to be worthy for what, ten years?
So, so the hard thing is for somebody to pick it up and, and leave with it. So we have done three gallon trees, which is the, you know, about an inch caliber trees.
Got to fit in sedan.
It's got to be able to fit and drive away with them. I mean, and we have done little cups, but that's like at the, the farmer's market or something. So people can walk away with it. So, yeah, it depends on where we're giving them away.
And, and how much does it cost to typically to replace a tree? Are we at a level where it costs?
Oh, for us to replant?
Just as much, no, for a homeowner. For example, if I'm, if I'm making a decision on whether or not to replace or pay the fine, potentially that could be comparable. The, the fine and the replacement cost would be comparable.
That, that's sort of what we did when we initially did that tree fee was we said, look, you can get about a two and a half inch tree for about a hundred and fifty dollars. And so that's why we set the fifty dollar per inch. Now the cost has skyrocketed significantly. I think it's about five hundred dollars per tree.
So there's no incentive to replace?
Not really.
All right. So the big things we wanted to, oh, yes, council member to work with.
Well, just nothing substantive other than we have such a great staff. I can't tell you, and I'm sure Edward, you've done this too, but Drew, I show up on a Sunday afternoon and there's Drew and his wife handing out trees. And I'm, you know, I'm sure you're not getting paid extra to do that. Just how much I appreciate that very much. The going the extra mile for what y'all.
Did they ask you to leave?
Well, you know, okay, so what? What, what we're going to leave here today with is that you're, you're supportive of our tree plant and how we're spending the fund and we'll, we'll continue down that path, buying land, affordable housing, long-term canopy maintenance, working with our special emphasis neighborhoods. And then on the tree ordinance, we have some things that you'd like us to go back and look at related to fees to help to see what we can do to improve what, where we see there are still holes in the ordinance. Okay, we'll come back to you within the next several months.
Bradenton is not here, but I would like to, as we work out these changes in the fee, et cetera, like, should we bring him in for better consultation if you know? All these things.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, aren't we doing the announcement about the person?
So moved. You got to say it first.
Somebody says it.
Did somebody make a motion?
Mayor, we're asking for the motion.
Go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. I'm going to do the announcement. Yeah, I'm going to do the, I'll, I'll do the announcement. Under, these are all under FOIA's exceptions to the open session requirements. Under SC code thirty dash four dash seventy-eight, one and two. Matters related to the governance of the zoo under A two, housing fund bond issuance under subsection A two, update on potential contracts around the location of City Hall and under A one, appointment of the City Board's existence.
Nice light agenda.